I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Nashville City Planning Board for May 3, 2018. Mr. Secretary, can you go ahead and make the roll?
Yes. Mayor Donches, Mike Peterson.
Present.
Scott Leclair.
Here.
Adam Varley.
Here.
Edward Weber.
Here.
Alderman David Trinska. Alderman Mary Ann. Steve DuCrane.
Present.
Dan Kelly. David Robbins.
Present.
Jerry Rupucci.
Here.
Maggie Harper.
Here.
Okay, thanks. And I think, Maggie, you're still an alternate, right?
Correct.
I think we have enough full-time members here right now, so you just be participating in discussion. Okay, we have in front of us the minutes from the April 12, 2018 Planning Board meeting. Anybody had a chance to take a look at them or want to make a motion either way, whether they're ready to go?
I'll make a motion. Will you approve the minutes as presented?
We have a motion for Mr. Rupucci to approve as presented. Any second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weber. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Two abstentions. All right, thanks. Communications, Linda.
Good evening. In your package tonight, you have three items. First, you have a draft of the Planning Board workshop that we're going to be conducting next Thursday night at eight p.m. at 7:00 in room 208. Next, we have an email from Ken Dufour regarding case number four, McDonald's. And then finally, we have a preliminary agenda to determine items of regional impact. That's it.
Okay, thanks. Reporter Chairman Committee Liaison, Ed, anything from?
HDC had nothing, no meetings for the last couple of months.
Okay, all right, thanks. Okay, I'm now going to go ahead and read the procedure of the meeting. So what's going to happen here is after the legal notice of each conditional special-use permit, site plan, or subdivision is read by me, the board's going to determine first if the application in front of us is complete and ready for the board to take jurisdiction. At that time, I'll start the public hearing. The applicant will come forward, or their representative, and they'll be given some time to present an overview of their project. They'll speak to whether or not they agree with the recommended stipulations that are in our staff reports. The board will then have the opportunity to ask some questions of the applicant and follow up with staff if we need to. I'll then ask for the testimony from the audience. First, I'm going to ask for anybody who's wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan. If you're so inclined, you just come forward to the microphone and make sure you say your name and your address for the record, and at that time, you can speak any concerns that you might have or questions with regard to the plan. Once I get through those that are concerned, then I'll ask for anybody who wants to speak in favor of the plan. The board will have a chance as well to ask questions to anybody who's coming up to speak if we have any questions for you. Next, the applicant will have a time to come back up and sort of speak in rebuttal or answer any questions that may have come up from the audience and respond to any concerns. After that, I will have one more opportunity. If there is still some folks in the audience that have any concern, I'm going to ask that you sort of get together and you have one person come forward, and you'll have a chance to also ask questions of the applicant, sort of of their rebuttal. After that's been completed, I'll close the public hearing. The board will resume what we call a public meeting, and we'll deliberate and vote on the application that's before us. I'd ask that both sides keep their remarks to the subject at hand and not repeat things that have already been said. Want to be fair to everybody and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented, considering all applicable approval criteria established in our Nashville Revised Ordinances for Conditional Special-Use Permits, Site Plans, and Subdivision Plans. I thank everybody for your interest and courteous attention. If you have cell phones at this time, if you could silence them or turn them off, I'd appreciate it. Okay. So, old business conditional special-use permits, there are none. Old business subdivision plans, there are none. Old business site plan, case number one, Diane E. Gimber and Bishop Real Estate, Inc. That case is currently tabled to an uncertain date. We'll notify the butters when that's going to come back on the schedule. New business conditional special-use permits, case number two, St. Joseph's Hospital owner, application and acceptance of proposed one-year extension for conditional use permit to construct a 35,275-square-foot, three-story medical office building. Property is at 172 Kinsley Street. I'm going to ask that that particular case be heard along with case number three, which is new business site plan for the same applicant at the same location. So I'm also going to, at this time, I'm going to recuse myself from that because I have an interest in the project, so I'm going to pass over the chair to Vice Chair Varley over here for these two items. All right, how?
Thank you, Mr. Leclair. So as to cases number two and number three, can I have a motion? These applications are complete and ready for the board to accept jurisdiction?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weber, second by Mr. Robbins. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Would Ms. Harper be voting on this since Chairman has recused himself?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, excuse me. Dan Kelly isn't here tonight, so he's a full member, so she could be voting for him.
We are missing a full member, so.
Okay.
So Maggie, if you vote on this, and then vote on the other matters as well.
Aye.
So that's an aye vote. Okay. Jim?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if you have to read those two cases into the record. I don't know that Chairman LeCarr had fully read the way they're posted on the agenda. I don't know if you have to do that or not.
Yes, I believe you read. You definitely indicated that we were hearing three with case three with number two, so I think we've.
Okay.
I think we have it sufficiently.
Good to go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Jim Petropolis. I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson, doing business at 3 Congress Street in Nashville, New Hampshire, tonight representing St. Joe's Hospital. With me is the Director of Operations, Bob DeMurs. The purpose of being here, under cases two and three, are we seeking one-year extensions on two cases that were previously approved by this Planning Board on May 18 of 2017. And these previously approved projects were for the St. Joe's Hospital site, which of course is located on Kinsley Street and Lake Street here in Nashville. I brought with me tonight the master plan of that particular project that I posted up on the board. Tonight's case two is the conditional use for medical offices in an RB zone. The Nashville Land Use Code regulations require conditional use permit to allow medical office building in the RB zone. And then case three is the site plan for the redevelopment of the southern portion of the St. Joe's site, which included the demolition of several buildings and the construction of a new three-story, 35,000-square-foot medical office building with accompanying site improvements. So if members of the board remember the case, we had access off of Lake Street here into a new parking area. The former church and convent buildings were to be taken down, and a new three-story medical office building, which would join the lower level of the parking with the mid-level of the garage, and then with an upper level to the back door of the St. Joe's Hospital. My presentation tonight, Mr. Chairman, will be very short. First, there are two reasons for the request. Primarily, St. Joe's is in the process of converting their computer operating system for the entire hospital. And to do that, they need the former church building along Lewis Street for their training. That's currently where their hub is. That's currently where their training facilities are. So that is reason one for the request for the extension. And then the second reason is the project team currently is fine-tuning details and pricing for the project. I would like the testimony to include, my testimony tonight, to include the fact that the meeting minutes from May 17, is that it? May 18, 2017, be incorporated in the conditions of approval from those two previous cases also remain in effect. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Adam.
Thank you.
Adam, before you go, didn't we just have a motion on the one, or, because I made the motion, was it just on the one that we voted on, yes, or do we also vote on the second that he's presenting? Because I didn't hear that we made a motion to approve on the second one.
No, we haven't made any motions to approve.
Okay. I thought we were working them together, that's why.
Right, no, we are.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll have to make two separate motions.
I mean, just to accept, though. That's what I'm saying, to accept as writ, as the.
Motion to the site complete, Planning Board takes jurisdiction. We didn't do it for the second one, so that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, we did them together.
Okay, so mine was, okay, I just want to make sure.
Voted for both.
We voted for both.
That was your motion, right?
I guess it was. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions for Mr. Petropolis?
I'd just like to bring up a couple of items that we talked about last time, and they were not made stipulations, but I believe there was a commitment to look into them. I know you, Mr. Petropolis, you have a sharp memory, so as long as you're on the project, they'll get done, but maybe this time you may want, Adam, if the board deems them conditions. The first one is, because we had some neighbors present the last time, and they were concerned about the existing cut roads through the neighborhood roads, as well as increased traffic with this new facility on Lake Street side, if we can do anything to encourage better circulation through the property using the existing garage ramp, through signage, and what have you. And so it's not documented in the minutes. I don't know, because I don't have the minutes, but it's certainly not a stipulation, and it's not in the approval letter. And the second one was the pedestrian access from the lower street side, seeing that they're going to remove the existing driveway. So pedestrians, whether someone's parked in the street and wanted to, in the street outside of the hospital lot and wanted to get in, or maybe some neighbors wanted to walk to the facility. And it was mentioned that they would consider it appears to be a good idea, losing a parking spot or two and creating that passageway for pedestrians. So those are the two things that were brought up last time. Seems that it was some interest in doing so.
Sure, if I may, you know, absolutely, whatever we committed to, I know I spoke out back before the hearing to several of the butters who were here. They expressed some concerns about the project. They expressed some concerns that were committed by myself and by Mr. DeMurs at the last meeting that are clearly in the meeting minutes but are not conditions of approval. These are some elements that are actually on the site plan, so I think the policy of the city has been not to add a condition of approval if the information's already there in the site plan. And I think that's where there's a little bit of a disconnect. So, yes, everything that we committed to at the hearing will be incorporated into the plans. You brought up two specific issues I'll quickly address. Access management, you know, I think we're doing quite an improvement, especially to the Lewis Street area here by taking away that curb cut right there and having traffic come in at the existing location here on Lake Street. This is an access that'll serve this parking lot, but it also allows you to get into the garage and Z back up to the top surface and actually get to that rear parking lot and out to Kinsley Street. We know that this street here, this public way, does not connect to our site. It's currently fenced off. We have not asked for access there. So in terms of vehicular access, I do feel this plan is an improvement, and those improvements are incorporated in the plan. I do remember with regard to pedestrian access, by cutting off the curb cut to Lewis Street, we were rebuilding that piece of sidewalk, so there was good connectivity to the Lake Street sidewalk. And I think the comment was, can we lose a space or two right here where we would, pedestrians would cross through the parking lot into a sidewalk in that large interior island and then to the front door of the medical office building? So we would certainly commit to doing that as well. So those were access and pedestrians. I know the neighbors brought up the two houses here that the plan says to be raised, to be demolished. Of course, they haven't been done yet. The project hasn't moved forward, but they will be taken down. The driveways will be taken away, and they'll be loomed and seeded. That was the testimony. That's what's included in the plan.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan? So please come forward. If you could just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Hurley. I live at 27 Lewis Street. If you look at the plan.
Sorry, would you just mind pulling the microphone down, just because otherwise they won't be able to get it for the record?
Hear me better now?
Yes, much better. Thank you.
So my property directly, but where they're dropping the building. Currently, there is a chain-link fence. Sorry, I'm going to, there is currently a chain-link fence. The hospital does nothing to take care of their property along that chain-link fence. I brought their trash with me today. I have pictures of the dead skunk along the chain-link fence that's been there for a month. There has been a hubcap along the chain-link fence for a year. You're going to drop a building next to my house. I have two small children and a dog. What garbage is going to come into my yard now?
Excuse me for one second.
Yeah?
Just help me understand this. I'm not questioning anything. I'm just curious as to what we're actually doing right now. I was thinking that all we were doing was approving a continuance, a previously granted permission. We weren't reconsidering the permission.
Correct. I agree with that.
Hold on for one second, please. So I'm not sure if, are we going to get into the actual conditions of the approvals, or is, are we kind of like rehearing these applications, or are we simply granting an extension of what we've already approved?
Yeah, I mean, I would say it's a, typically, when we're considering extension requests, particularly ones where there are no changes being proposed to the plan, it is relatively straightforward. Having said that, it is a public hearing, and, you know, the applicant does need to seek approval of the extension of the approvals that were previously given by this board. So with that said, I think it's appropriate to.
Okay.
At least hear the public testimony, and then we can discuss, you know, the relevance of that to the vote we're taking afterwards.
Thank you.
Can I add to that? I think that opportunity has to be given, because there could be changes within that year that could affect whatever decision, or decision that was made a year ago. So we typically do give that audience that opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, please go ahead.
No, that's okay. I know this project is going forward. My concern is, what is the project going to do to prevent debris, trash, harmful objects from coming into my property if they can't pick up their trash from when they get bark mulch delivered?
Mr. Robbins?
May I ask the Speaker a couple of questions, please? Can you, can you tell me again where your property is on the map?
I am 27 Lewis Street, so Mark and Stephanie are Hurley. I'm right next to the parking lot. So I'm on Lewis.
Okay, all right, so you front on Lewis Street and.
The whole side of my yard is the parking lot.
Is there, I'm trying to get this straight in my head. Is there a fence between you?
There is a chain-link fence. For five years, I've been promised a privacy something.
Okay, and have you talked to the hospital about this, or?
Talked to Bob many times.
Okay. And if I understand what you're saying, you're concerned that there is, your allegation is that the hospital has not done well in cleaning up their trash.
I have pictures of the dead skunk, if you'd like to see it.
We would, I don't know if I could speak for the rest of the board, but we'll look at anything that's offered. What would you, what would you like to see if you could?
I would prefer a privacy fence that will at least keep the trash out of my yard if they can't pick up the trash. At least it won't come into my yard.
Would a, when I think of a privacy fence, something like a six-foot stockade fence?
Stockade fence, I'd even be fine with slats, anything to keep the garbage out.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
And can I bring one more concern, which really isn't about this project necessarily? I don't think it's going to change anything. Plowing is an issue. I was told they have to plow whenever the contractor has to come and plow. So we had a deal at one point that they would not plow after a certain hour at night. And I get they have to get the parking lot ready in the morning, and I have absolutely no problems with that. However, 1:00 a.m. on the weekend with a front-end loader, hearing a bucket truck just constantly is a huge issue. And it's only going to increase now that we're increasing the hours of what is next to me. Those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition or concern? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Anne Marie White, and I own the property at 8 Early Street. It's the little street that runs directly behind St. Joseph's Hospital and the parking garage. Okay, so my concern is the same as I had last year when I attended this meeting, that when the parking garage was built several years ago, the hospital promised to do certain things and not impact the neighborhood, and that never happened. I have pictures, if I could approach the bench and show you what I brought with me.
Sure, if you just want to hand them to Engineer Crane to pass them around.
I mentioned that there's two houses directly across, like the engineer spoke of, and I was told that those are going to be raised at some point, and the driveways would be removed. As you can see in the pictures, that, you know, the cars park on the grass. The brown house has been vacant for probably 30 years. It is such a complete eyesore, and now the bigger, two-family building, the white building, they have a motor home in the driveway with a sawhorse. They're dumping gravel on the lawn. They're not trimming the bushes anymore. It is just becoming worse and worse. I get that the project hasn't started yet, but I was very disappointed to come tonight and see that what was discussed last year, and I thought what got approved, was that the houses were going to get taken down, and it was going to be a green space, and I was guaranteed that no more cars would park there, and it would actually be an enhancement, maybe a couple of benches or something for people to come and sit and have lunch or whatever. And it's not even mentioned, it shows the two houses are getting raised, but other than that, I mean, it doesn't tell me anything that it's going to improve what I'm seeing now. So that was very disappointing, and I'm just very concerned that, you know, we're just a little, you know, neighborhood. I grew up in that neighborhood. It was always a very quiet residential. I'm not against progress. I'm not against the medical center going up. I just want some consideration. I just, that's all I'm asking for, and I would have been very happy tonight to see that that had become part of the conditions. And it's, it's like, you know, everything, all of my concerns were just, other than being told those two eyesore homes are going to get ripped down, but that doesn't, the road is completely demolished in front of that, it just.
Just to clarify, I mean, the two houses are, I mean, part of the plan that we previously approved and that they're asking for an extension with respect to, does provide, and provides on the plan itself that.
Correct.
The houses are to be raised.
Correct.
And I do recall the discussion about the green space, and the applicant had indicated that they were, you know, that they were going to raise the houses and then sort of clean up that area and make a green space. So that's part of the, that's part of the approval that we'd be looking at. So I think the applicant has indicated is, you know, there have been some delays in commencing with the project, but.
I understand that. It's just that it's not in the condition saying that once the houses are torn down, that they're going to actually do something to make the property look nice for a change. I've had the parking garage and that awful vacant building for over 30 years with just employees parking all over the lawn, and in the winter, they dump their, all their snow removal between the two houses, and now in the summer, they're dumping these piles of dirt. They just don't care at all about that street or the neighborhood. I just would like to see some kind of condition that guarantees us that when this goes forward and they build this new beautiful center, that they do something for the neighborhood as well, to just not have it become completely trashed.
Yeah, I mean, we can have the applicant confirm, but again, I do recall the discussion, and that was what they'd indicated, and I'll ask the applicant if he can confirm whether that's either on the plan or otherwise to reconfirm that that would be what they're committing to.
Okay, thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the plan? The applicant like to address those issues raised?
Sure, thank you. For the record, Jim Petropolis, sorry I didn't pull this down for you. Ms. Hurley's comments, fencing, trash, privacy fence, Bob said sure, privacy fence along her property line is fine, whether that takes in the form of slats or whatever type of material. I'm going to let Bob work that out with Ms. Hurley. I would like to point out to the board, though, that currently, along that property line, the edge of pavement and parking for the church is 10 feet off their property line. And with the redesign, we pulled things over 30 feet away on average across her property line. We pulled lighting away. So I think we have been sensitive to her particular location. With regard to plowing, she's correct. Nobody should have to deal with plowing at 1:00 in the morning, and St. Joe's will have to do a better job at that. Trash, I don't know how to control trash. Bob has heard the comments, and he'll act accordingly. I didn't catch the woman's name at 8 Early. The two houses, our testimony before is the same as it is. The houses, the driveways, the parking areas will come down, and it'll be loamed and ceded. That's in the drawings. That's part of the approval. If St. Joe's doesn't do that, they're in violation of their site plan. And typically, what happens, the medical office building would not get their certificate of occupancy until all those improvements are done. To make it a further condition of approval is rather redundant. We have our testimony. If that's the wishes of the board, then so be it. If that's the wishes of the board, then so be it. But it is an element of the site plan. And so I do think those were the comments that they brought up this evening. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Robbins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would...if I understood, and I also didn't catch the last name of the...
White, Anne Marie White.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Ms. White.
And 8 Early Street, you mean?
Yes. If I understood, Ms. White, not only the two buildings coming down, but maintenance of that area, grass, and if I understand what she was saying, she was very concerned about parking and things being dumped in that area. And would it be your understanding that that would not be happening once this project was completed, that there would not be parking over there?
It's my understanding, the removal of the houses, the curb cuts in the driveways, will eliminate the ability to go do that. I wouldn't see a vehicle hopping a curb to dump a load of loam or bark mulch or whatever.
Well, I assume they're coming the other way.
Yeah. Well, so that's my understanding. Hey, listen, you know, she doesn't like the looks of the buildings. We're going to take them down. But the hospital has rights too. Their property rights too. And I think them taking down two viable houses, they could lease to people who work there, I think is a good concession to the people on 8 Early Street. 8 Early Street's a nice street. I get it. I understand. And I think taking down the homes, the driveways, the pavement, and loaming and seeding, I think is an excellent offer and part of a plan by the hospital.
Thank you.
Mr. Pucci?
If I was just thinking about this, I think that you guys are coming asking just for a continuance of time to do what you committed to do. And the neighbors are concerned that the things you committed to fix when you do the project haven't started yet, which, in my view, is very understandable because you haven't started yet. However, when you reference the fence, when you say that's easily done, do you mean that you guys are going to take care of that privacy fence now or when the project is actually implemented?
Anything we commit to is when the project commences.
Okay, so when you say the fence is no problem, but what you mean is when the project is done, not tomorrow?
That's correct.
But when the...I just wanted to be clear about that, so their expectation is clear.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
As a point of clarification, after the houses are raised and the loam and seed is put down, does the hospital reserve the right to store materials and park cars on that property, use it as they see fit, or will it just be grass lot?
The intent is just a grass lot.
So whatever they're doing there now will cease?
Yes, that's my understanding, Bob. Yes?
Thank you.
I was just curious, I'm not sure in what order you're going to be doing this project, but once the homes are demolished, are you going to be using this area for staging for the project?
I don't think so. There's a great change between those houses, and 8 Early Street's not a street we want to be driving on. So I suspect the sequence would be demolition of existing buildings, construction of site improvements. The building goes up as the site is finished, and then probably the houses come down towards the end. And that'll be a separate action probably through 8 Early or through the back of the hospital lot that will need to be done.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Mark, can I...
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
This is Bob DeMers, Director of Operations at St. Joseph's.
Thank you.
Good evening. Regarding the landscaping and so forth, just everybody knows, we do have a commercial company that comes in and does all the cleaning. Possibly some of the trash that was on the Hurley's fence was done...I mean, it probably blows down Lake Street. Our contractor begins in the beginning and made us start cleaning the properties. The properties on Lewis and 8 Early are taken care of as well. I don't know where the dumping of the gravel took place. I haven't seen any of that on the property. I know they're doing work down the street, gas lines and so forth, but we haven't been dumping any gravel or loam or anything on that particular property. Now, the snow that she talks about, that's just snow that's on the top level of the garage. It's just dumped over the edge. I mean, you have to put the snow somewhere, and that's where it is. The RV she talks about, it's not a motor home. It's a mobile health van that we provide community services. It's on a...the White House just became vacated. We pay taxes on it. It's got a driveway. I think we're entitled to park the van there at this point in time. The other property, the brown house, has probably been vacant for, I don't know, maybe 20, 30 years. And I know that there are employees that park there at this point in time. We did say that that would come to an end. But just to clarify some of these issues, I mean, we take great pride in our property, and I think it looks really good right now. And it's all, you know, done by a commercial company. I do have one or two guys that go out and clean the grounds as needed as well. And if the neighbors have issues, they can feel free to call us, and we'll definitely attend to those needs.
Question.
Mr. Roberts?
Would you mind some point in time in the near future to walk that fence that she's talking about?
Absolutely. I just did it the other day, and we'll do it again. I mean, one section of that fence was...actually, we let Green Gardens of Nashville, there's a not-for-profit agency, we let them use some of that property to grow gardens for the people down in the Tree Street area. So...but yes, we walked that property.
Okay. Would you meet with the person? Would you meet with the person?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is there a possibility that the hospital may be willing to repair the fence prior to the project?
I can talk with the administrative people, see if we can do that.
This is a good neighbor. I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, we try to be good neighbors. I mean, you know, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, I would give the abutters just very briefly one last opportunity to speak to the testimony that you just heard from the applicant, if you so choose.
My only comment is...
Name?
I'm sorry, Anne Marie White, 8 Early Street. He's saying he doesn't know where this dirt came from, and he did mention, he acknowledged the snow gets dumped. But if any of you want to take a drive-by, there's a pile of dirt there, don't know where that came from. And in the front of the White...you see it in the pictures, and there's a pile that was just dumped of gravel on the front lawn of the White House. So I'm just saying, it's...if he wants to be a good neighbor, I'm not asking for much. It's like, just don't make it look worse than it already does. It's like, you know, I don't understand why it has to continue being a dumping station for...I'm just...that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You know, at this point, I really want to limit it to those who spoke before, because we already went through the original testimony period. Any further questions for the applicant? Staff have anything to add?
Staff has nothing to add.
Are we going to close the public hearing? This concludes the public hearing on this application. We will now take our discussions into the public meeting for deliberation, or does reserve the right to recall any party for further clarification. So I think there's the two issues. There's the fencing, privacy on Lewis Street, and the applicant has committed to put up some sort of privacy fence and to have, I guess, we'd let them determine in their discussions with the abutter what might work best there. That was not a condition of the original approvals that we could consider, whether we would add that condition. I appreciate the concern about sort of the timing of it, but I would be disinclined to obligate the applicant to do it first. I mean, if they're able to do that, I think that's great. But appreciating that they're, you know, that they're trying to, you know, time the different parts of the project, that would just be my view on that. And then in terms of the houses, I mean, it seems to me that from the abutters' perspective, the best thing would be for this project just to move forward, because right now, you know, the hospital is using those houses and, as Mr. Metropolis said, has every right to. But once they complete the project, those houses are going to be gone, and they're going to remove the issue from the abutters' perspective. So I think, you know, hopefully, you know, assuming that the project does move forward in relatively near the future, that will just be taken care of. Once discussion, questions?
I do. Yeah, just from the pictures that were presented, I think two things. There is a huge pile of loam in the back of that White House's property against, near the garage, which seems like they have every right to put there if they want to. The gravel in the front, I am willing to suggest has nothing to do with the hospital. They're doing the gas lines on Kinsley Street, and this block of gravel you see in the picture has the little blue flag in it that the gas company uses to flag where the gas mains are. I would expect that the gas company, as they did all the way down Kinsley Street, they would have gone down and marked where all the gas services are in the area where they're working. So that just looks to me like that's exactly what that is. You can see it right there. It doesn't look like...it's not like somebody just dumped a pile of gravel there, you know, carelessly. So I agree that we either do something to make them to not approve their continuance, or we grant them the continuance and leave things as they are. And unfortunately, I think the wheels turn slowly. People just have to be patient until...what I'm trying to say is, they're not out of compliance with anything. They just haven't started yet. That's kind of the way I see it. And I'm of the mind to just approve their continuance until they're ready to do it. That's Ryan.
Mr. Peterson?
Are we to conclude from the discussions that we've had, that that medical van will no longer be there once the project is completed, or will they use that spot as storage for the medical van?
No. I think that the testimony was clear that the expectation is that they wouldn't. Now, having said that, I mean, again, I mean, they do...they could, if they wanted to, park it there, but I, you know...
But they're removing that driveway and curb cut.
They're removing the driveway.
So by testimony...
Yeah. I don't think they're going to, you know, like I said, drive over the curb or park it on planted grass.
They'd be four-wheeling, yeah, on the van.
So, but that was...I think that testimony was pretty clear.
We didn't explicitly discuss that. That's why I'm trying to ascertain what everybody else's impression was.
Yeah, I think the testimony was pretty unequivocal on that.
Yeah, and the houses may be...the two houses may be in the last phase of it. It may not be at this beginning, but it'll finish up, and it'll be no curb cut there. It'll be regular, like you'd see with green grass and everything, so...
Other...want to discussion, comments?
Make a motion.
Mr. Roberts? And this is as to new business number two?
Two and then three. New business number two, conditional use permit, St. Joseph's Hospital. Plan meets NRO 190-133-F with no stipulations.
Motion is by Mr. Weber to approve new business number two, conditional use permit, finding it does meet the requirements outlined in our Section 190-133-F with no additional stipulations. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Is there any further discussion?
Just...it's just...do we say that it's extending the previously approved conditional use permit? Isn't that what we're doing? The conditional use permit was approved, and we're just granting an extension to that permit? We're not issuing a conditional use permit? Am I being too technical?
Well, I mean, we are effectively issuing the conditional use permit, because, I mean, otherwise it would expire.
All right. If it's clear that that's what we're doing, that's fine.
But you're, as a practical matter, you're absolutely right.
Okay.
Sorry. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Mr. Weber, do you want to...
Yes.
New business site plan, St. Joseph's Hospital.
The plan does meet the site plan, NRO 190-146-D, with all prior conditions and approvals are incorporated herein, made part of this plan, otherwise determined by the planning
Motion by Mr. Weber is to approve new business number three, site plan, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in site plan, NRO Section 190-146-D, with the one stipulation as written in the staff report. Is there a second to that motion?
Second motion.
Second by Mr. Pucci. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Yes.
Janice M. and James R. French, owners, McDonald's applicant. The application acceptance of proposed site plan amendment to NR 1893 to remove the existing drive-through and construct a proposed side-by-side drive-through and modify the existing parking layout. Our property is located at 3 Northeastern Boulevard. Can I have a motion by somebody on the board whether this plan is ready for us to take jurisdiction?
Make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Riley to take jurisdiction. Any second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weber. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay.
Mr. Chair, am I voting now or no?
I think once you start, right?
Yeah, and I think, well, as Linda correctly pointed out, Mr. Kelly is not here this evening, so we are missing a regular...
Oh, that's right. Yeah.
Yes, you are.
Thanks.
Members of the board, I appreciate you seeing us tonight. For the record, my name is Brandon Barry. I'm with Bowler Engineering, the civil engineer for the site. We're located at 352 Turnpike Road in Southborough, Massachusetts. I'm also joined by Leigh Ann Cole, who's here representing McDonald's tonight. As was discussed, we're here seeking an amendment to the site plan approval for the existing McDonald's restaurant located at 3 Northeastern Boulevard. The restaurant is abutted by Northeastern Boulevard to the south, Holiday Circle to the west, a nursing home to the east, and a daycare center to the south of the site. The site currently features a one-way entrance drive from Northeastern Boulevard, one-way circulation for the most part around the restaurant, a two-way entrance drive out onto Holiday Circle, and a single order point drive-through featuring a single menu board and a single order point. I'm going to keep my presentation on what we're doing. In the proposed condition brief, because it's similar to a project you guys saw last year at the McDonald's on Daniel Webster Highway, but to summarize the changes that we're doing, we're updating the drive-through layout to their McDonald's side-by-side drive-through. We're renovating the exterior of the building to... We're renovating the exterior of the building to bring it in line with their current branding standards. And then we'll be updating the accessible features of the restaurant, including sidewalks and parking spaces to make sure that they're compliant with all ADA regulations. The changes to the side-by-side drive-through, we'll take the existing drive-through that features a single lane and a single place to order and split that into two lanes, going to two order points that then merge back into a single lane where food can be picked up at the window. This drive-through configurations allow cars that have simple orders to continue moving, while the cars that may have larger orders will, will sit in order point and maybe take a little bit longer. It allows free throw through the secondary lane. So this, this is a practice that McDonald's is doing at a number of their restaurants throughout the country. And we've also done a couple of them here in town. It's a, it's a great tool to help decrease the queuing on-site, increase the drive-through efficiency, and just move the drive-through traffic the restaurant's experiencing faster through the, through the order point. To accommodate the layout, we're making more changes to the site than we typically would. The site currently has, as you enter, there's two lanes of traffic that are separated by a small landscaped area. When you first enter the site, there's a weird intersection where there's a one-way exit coming at you, or two exit lanes coming at you as you pull in. Under our proposed condition, we will remove that where the recirculation lane would meet the entrance, but there really would just be a straightaway into the site. So we believe where we're making circulation at the entrance to the site better and making it a little bit easier to understand how things circulate around the site. By pulling our pavement in on the site approximately 19 feet, we're creating an additional 5,500 square feet of pervious area on the eastern side of our site, which will also increase the buffer to the, the nursing home use to, that's adjacent to us, which we think is a great improvement on the site from a stormwater perspective, but also as far as our abutting neighbors go. Lastly, we'll be looking to upgrade the exterior of the building, bringing it in line with McDonald's more contemporary feeling as they kind of transition to a new restaurant model. This is similar to what you've seen at the restaurant on Daniel Webster Highway, and we've implemented cultured stone, which is kind of a unique material that we're seeing on the McDonald's here in Nashua into the building, per recommendations we had gotten from staff on the previous site. With that, I'd also like to point out that we have, we have worked with staff over the past couple of months. We believe that the plan we have in front of you is agreeable to us and staff, and we have addressed all of their comments as they kind of outlined in their memo. Additionally, at the recommended, recommendation of staff, we had sent out a notice a few months ago to the abutting neighbors. We were made aware of the contention on this project when it was originally built. So to avoid filling the room, which obviously has not happened, we sent notices out to abutters within 200 feet, offering the opportunity to call and speak with us if they had any questions. We did not receive any response to that, and we don't see any abutters here tonight. So we believe that's a, a good sign for our project. With that, I would welcome any questions or comments the boards may have.
Okay, thanks. Just for our use, maybe you can just stand in front of the plan there. And just, can you kind of just explain the traffic flow as you come into the site, go through the drive-through, and then exit the site? Maybe just, just point your way around, just so.
So as you, as you enter from Northeastern Boulevard, you'll come in. No changes to the existing driveway. We're picking up pavement here, so we're making some changes as you enter, but for the most part, the driveway entrance is unchanged. Under our proposed condition, you'll pull in. You'll be greeted with just one way of traffic with parking on either side. You would then come in. You have two drive-through lanes that you can pick from, to choose, which customers typically pitch the one with the shorter queue at the time. You would order here, continue around the building to the first pickup window where you would pay for your food, and then the second one where you would pick it up. As is similar with the existing condition, you would then have to travel back around the site and exit out onto Holiday Circle as our entrance to Northeastern Boulevard is just a one-way entrance. Traffic entering from Holiday Circle, we have a similar travel path. They would come in, follow the drive, the drive aisle around the restaurant, come here where we're adding stop control. It's a little unclear on who has to stop here and who has the right-of-way, so we're trying to clear that up in the proposed condition. Come around, order through the drive-through, and then again, recirculate the site to exit.
Okay. All right, and then as far as the other improvements on the site, can you talk about sort of the boundary on the?
Yep, so it's.
Is there, there new fencing?
Um, so we are doing, at the recommendation of staff, we are proposing a new vinyl fence. So we have a stockade fence there currently that we had gotten some comments from the previous planning board chair that is in a little bit of disrepair. So we, we had agreed to replace that fence, and we're gonna upgrade it to a vinyl fence, which we think will have more longevity and provide a little bit extra screening. In addition, it's a little bit hard to see, but the tip of my pen here is showing where our existing pavement line is today. So it's approximately eight to 10 feet off the property line. Here is where we'll be under our proposed condition. So we're pulling that line in about 19 feet. Also, under existing, this is all parked right up to the property line, whereas based off our drive-through, you know, in this area, which is closest to the nursing home building, we won't have any parking headed in directly to that. So our parking in this area is being moved more to the front of the site, you know, closer to where you'll actually enter the building. And then removed in this area, which we think was probably one of the, the worser areas for the nursing home.
Okay, and can you explain the extent of pavement renewal?
So pavement removal through this side, for the most part, all of this will be new pavement. There's a grade change through this landscaped area that we'll be removing. So pretty much our pavement removal is, is throughout this side, approximately to the rear where we're connecting back in and maintaining all of the existing on this side, and then existing through the front. So really, our, our limits of pavement removal will be through this section, right here.
Okay, all right. Any changes to the dumpster location?
Nope. Dumpster location is, is back in this rear corner here, and that will be, that will be maintained through the project.
That's maintained, okay. Any new landscaping?
Landscaping around the building, we'll have some new green areas through here. We, we typically on these type of projects, just given the scope and scale, won't put together a plan and leave it up to the operators generally responsible for the, the ongoing maintenance to work with their landscape contractors to put together a landscape plan for that, or plant it out as appropriate.
Okay. Other questions on the board? Mr. Robbins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to, to clarify, can you explain on one of those what the traffic flow from Northeastern Boulevard is right now to, to make a, a drive-through purchase?
Yep. So as you enter from Northeast Boulevard here, what I was kind of describing before is, under the existing condition, as you enter, this drive aisle has an entrance coming back in. So you're, you're meted by cars coming in this way as well as that way. So there's kind of like three lanes all meeting right here. Assuming there is no one, you would continue into the site, enter through the drive-through, place your order approximately here, and then come back around, pick up, or pay, pick up, and then again, rotate around the site to come out. So the northeast, actually both entrances will have a very similar traffic pattern to circulate the site to use the drive-through.
Well, that, that was one of my, one of my questions. There really is no change in the general. It's like a 360 and then a 270 or something to get out on the circle. Okay. Right now, is there a pass-through lane? In other words, if, if you are in the drive-through lane and the car ahead of you breaks down, is there a way to get around it?
Yeah, there isn't a blockade here, so there is a, an access out through this side. Under the proposed condition, we would have a block through the drive-through through here, but then a pass-out through here if someone was to have broken down in there.
Okay. Is that both lanes that, where you'd be able to, to get around, or?
Um, by the time you're, you're getting to this point where there is that, that place to exit out or a relief exit, that the lanes have merged back in, so that would be the, where you could exit would be in the single lane portion of the drive-through.
Well, I get, where I was concerned is if the, both of the ordering windows were, or I guess it's the, is it the ordering windows or the pickup windows?
Oh, you mean the, the ordering points here?
The ordering points, thank you. If both of those are, are clogged for some reason, and you were behind one of the two clogged locations, is there a way to get around, or are you stuck there?
You could come out through here. If it was to, to be clogged, or if there was something breaking down, I know, I would assume the manager would, would go out and they have ways to cone off or signal that the lane is closed to, to force traffic into the other one. Given the, the width of this bypass lane, you know, a car here could presumably back out to exit through this way. So I don't think you would be stuck. You would have to, to reverse slightly to get out of the lane.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Rapucci?
Yeah, I'm looking at the, the second-to-last drawing that is the only one that's not completely obliterated with numbers and arrows. And I'm having a hard time understanding what the drive-through lanes are. Because it shows the aerial fire truck, the one with the picture of the aerial fire truck on Northeastern Boulevard as it's about to enter. It's not, not the one you got there.
Sheet one.
Sheet one.
Sheet number one.
The truck turn sheet.
Oh, it's the, the truck turning plan that we had provided?
Yeah.
Truck turn.
Yep.
Okay, so that's just intended to show where truck, the truck will go. That's not intended to show accurately the way the drive-through works, because the drive-through lanes on this drawing swing around and don't line up with the actual drive-throughs. They.
Just approach and see the drawing you're looking at real quick?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the truck turn.
Yeah, that was, um, that was just an exhibit that was prepared to show that truck circulation would be able to get onto and around the site appropriately. So that, that is not intended to show how the drive-through traffic would function.
Okay, so looking at this drawing, understanding that, to the left of where the two, where the two drive-throughs are now, there are four parking spaces and two handicap spaces against the building. Are those there presently?
Um, under the existing conditions, they do not have parking up against the building. Under the existing condition, the drive-through lane is directly adjacent to the building.
Right, so these drive-through lanes are basically going to go and block off these six parking spaces when the drive-through lane is backed up.
What, what we find with the new double drive-through, under the existing condition, the, the order point is really the, the critical path in the, in the drive-through process. With just the one point, when you have that car that has, you know, half a soccer team in it and each of them has a unique order, they're gonna sit in order for, you know, a couple of minutes, and it's gonna take longer, and then people start backing up towards the street. With this layout, what we find is more the critical path is the kitchen delivering food. So we're moving cars through the order faster to this point, so that more of our queuing is experienced beyond the order point. So from here forward versus under the existing condition, we find it's more from the order point backwards. So they implement these layouts to kind of push more orders through, and what that leads to is less queuing backing up towards the street and more queuing between the order and the kitchen. So really, where we're showing the drive-through entrances is, is what we would anticipate being kind of maximum stacking on the site.
Where are the handicap parking spaces now?
The handicap parking spaces are opposite the drive aisle and drive-through lane. So accessible customers parking on the site would come in and they have handicap spaces here and then have to cross both the drive aisle and the drive-through lane to access the restaurant, which is, is not our preference, and we prefer to have them against the building. The drive-through lane that we've gone forward with is actually the, the proto-drive-through layout that we would go with, including stacking those parking spaces along the drive, the side of the building.
So how much of a stack is there from the ordering points back to where it blocks those parking spaces?
Let me grab my scale real fast. That just seems wrong to me. So in the, the primary or inside lane, I have 40 feet from where the order point is to where we would have a car here, so about two stacking spaces. And then in the exterior lane, I have about 60 feet, so another five stacking spaces, and that's just to get to this point here. So I have a total of five stacking spaces of cars from my order point to where we're actually entering the drive-through.
So you, you guys don't think it's a problem that cars will be parked against the building? And if there's two cars in the stacking lane, that first car is blocked in there? That's, that's, works? And then for those people to get out of those spaces, the stacking lane would have to concede, right? People would have to stop going forward to let those cars out?
Yes, if it was to stack to that point. Like I said, we, from what we've seen on these restaurants, and when we implement this layout, which like I said is the preferred layout for these new drive-throughs, this is what I would go for on a brand-new site. We don't see stacking really going back into those spaces. But if it was to back up, then yes, someone would need to concede to let them out. But we don't anticipate that happening.
How, how many cars can you get between the order point and the pickup window?
I have 100 feet from my order point to the pickup window. So I would have stacking for five spaces in the exterior lane, in the, or in the interior lane, I would then have about two additional stacking spaces in my secondary. So I could get seven cars, not including two ordering, from the order points to the window.
So for that inside lane, there'd be seven cars?
It would be five cars.
Essentially stacked?
It would be five cars in the interior lane, and then I could fit.
But two up of the order lane?
And that's after, those are cars that have already placed their orders and moved through.
So nine total, if you can count the two that are. So I can, I can have nine cars ordering and stacked fully through the drive-through lane.
When that car that has the large order gets to the pickup window, because they're gonna have a larger order and longer time, that's why we have some pull-forward spaces here, which the kitchen will then just move them along. So again, the smaller orders can keep free-flowing, and we don't have a clog up on the backend either.
Can you go to the existing one and, and again, and, so where's the order point on the existing one?
Order point on the existing one is approximately right directly behind the building here.
Right there. So how many cars stack there until it affects the cars on the right-hand side?
Over here?
Yeah. Or does it, is it wide enough between the drive-through lane, or is it the same situation, it's just on the other side?
It's, you have a, a little bit of width here. Take a look at.
The way it is now, you can pull in and out of the parking spaces on the right side without affecting the drive-through lane.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
From a personal observation, I was at, at McDonald's recently, early in the morning, where the order point is at the, at the top of the drawing. And that line was backed up almost to the entrance, you know, so as Mr. Rapucci just said, cars can get to the parking spaces on the right side of the drawing, and the drive-in line, drive-through line didn't affect those. But I could see how in the morning when it's busy or lunchtime, the backup at the order point could easily block those those handicap spots on the left. You know, lunchtime, morning time, all these commuters, they don't want to get out of their car, and they're just backed up for, they'd rather wait in their car, it seems. Just an observation, I thought I.
Steve?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Staying on the same topic. So we've seen it done both ways, and people can make argument for whichever, where they want. We had a, another fast food restaurant before us, and we kept the circu, the circulation was presented around the building, and all the parking was away, all the parking. And the big concern was, how do you get people from their cars to the restaurant door, crossing the traffic? In the end, we pointed out that it's been done in many other locations, so it should be fine. In this case, I could see the effort of trying to have some parking, especially handicap parking, up against the building. In a case like this, see those couple of last spaces prior to the drive-through entrance? I'm gonna guess that no one wants to park there because you back out. You can't easily get to, you know, the parking area, so you might, you'd be forced sort of go through the drive-through once again, that full circulation. Normally, I would say you have, that as employee parking. But the handicap space is probably what I'd be worried about, is if you do have that kind of stacking during your peak hours, can they get out? Because that, that's pretty much all your handicap parking right there. And like Mr. Peterson said, that queue length, like it is today, if it's measured all the way out to Notice Boulevard, I mean, does that, does this double lane here? way out to Northeastern Boulevard, I mean, does that, does this double lane here, you know, accommodate that, that queue? Would do the additional efficiency that you're looking at? And you would know that from experience, so, you know, I'm sure they don't want this to, to not be successful. There are some constraints and if you look at the letter that was handed tonight from Mr. Dufour, it talks about constraints that were originally observed when the site went in the nineties, I think it was in the nineties. And he still thinks that this is an improvement. Mr. Dufour, everyone should know, is the past chair of the planning board, and he used to really examine these kinds of sites very carefully and he himself would take on his personal mission of going out there and chastising people and chasing them down and all that stuff. But he did observe that, that this is an improvement and I know he doesn't live too far away from it either. I don't think, you know, we can, we can beat up too much on this one. I, I applaud the effort of trying to get handicap spaces closer to the building. It's just that should your backup queue, in some instances, block them, probably serving a disservice to those using those spots.
Okay. Mr. Weber?
Uh, thank you. Over by the dumpster, you have a deep culvert there. All the fencing or barricade that keeps people from falling in are in disrepair and it goes all the way around. Yours is showing only partial now. It's only gonna have one-sided barricade, not the complete.
What drawing are you looking at?
I'm looking at sheet one.
Um, looking at my, my survey, I think that was just left off the survey. We don't have any intention to remove any barriers that are there.
It's broken.
It's, it's just broken?
Right now, it's in total broken down, needs to be repaired, needs to be re-fixed. The culvert needs to be completely cleaned out. It's in, it's just not in any condition that it should be in. That needs to be fixed. And it has to be an ongoing fix, not just now. That's part of your landscaping scheme should be there and that needs, because otherwise all grass and bushes and everything is starting, gonna start and it's gonna look, and it's gonna be not workable situation.
It's, it, we're definitely agreeable to replacing the barrier as part of this project. We can make sure that the culvert gets cleaned out and then we can work with the operator to ensure that they're, they're continuing ongoing maintenance on that.
Okay. It might be, I don't know if it is a great idea, but it might be a good idea to move the handicap parking down one slot so it's farther away, it's not impacted as bad as it won't be impacted. It's an idea, it's nothing to do. See, it's, if there's one parking space in between that, and if that got moved down, that has a better chance of not being influenced by the drive-through?
We could, um, we could look to accommodate that.
Just look through it?
Yep.
The other thing is with handicap, you have the hos, you know, the older people just down the street, they come in and use the building and currently there's no eight, uh, handicap button for them to have the doors open and stay open while a wheelchair goes through. I, I don't think that I can put a stipulation in here now because you're not doing the front edge, but it might be a really good idea bec, to help the people that are coming, your patrons, that it would be a, a plus for you guys to have a handicap access door button that actually holds the door open while somebody comes in on bo, if there's a double door. And that's, the door may be the door closest to the vans. That one right at the, the, yes, that one there? If that, just to look at, see if that's something that you guys could, could do. It just would really influence and help people, even though you're not doing major to the entrances, just to consider.
We can, um, we can definitely bring that up to consider. I think that was something that was brought up on the, the previous site that we did. So we can, we can discuss that with McDonald's.
Thank you. The other McDonald's that went, went through over here, they did do a major entrance area and so they automatically, yes, we're gonna do that anyway.
Mm-hmm.
So it's just, it's something to really help out. Uh, you do have, why I say that, on going back to that culvert and that barricade stuff, lots of people come from Holiday Inn there, walk up your exit area to, and that's how they get in. They walk up to that area and cross over even though there's traffic there, they'll walk up. And that's where there's no, not really any barrier and that's where somebody could fall and that's only gonna protect McDonald's if you have the barriers there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And that's all I have.
Mr. Robbins?
Thank you very much. Looking at sheet number one that has the truck turn?
Yep.
On the look, if, if we look at the, the building, the lower left-hand corner of the building, very close to where it says "thank you" upside down.
Mm-hmm.
Is there going to be any kind of a fence so that somebody walking east to west across the south side of the building does not run the risk of getting a car coming out going north to south and get clipped? Is there gonna be anything right to prevent them from walking into the drive-through lane?
Yep. We typically, that, that exit door, which is pretty standard on McDonald's, will do like a four-foot handrail on the side of that, right along the edge of that curb to stop people from stepping right out.
And that's on the plan?
Yep.
It is? Okay, thank, thank you very much. And one other thing, and I realize that you were, uh, you're the prisoner of what exists. I mean, you've got, you've got a site there and, um, I can't imagine that anybody would design something where you have to go almost twice around the building to, to do a drive-through. But that's, that's what you got, that's what you got to deal with. My concern is, and I, and I do some, some driving for a living on occasion, I, I'm very concerned with the new parking spots on the east side that are gonna be put in, the one, two, three, four, and then the two handicap spots. Backing up, I, I really think that, that that is a disaster waiting to happen. People backing in, because if you're in the, one of the top two or three parking spaces looking north to south, you actually would have to back out into traffic, into the entry lane and actually almost go back a little bit to then take a right and go around. And I am really concerned about that. I mean, I, you know, all of this backing and filling, people crossing back and forth, seems like a real safety issue.
I don't know if I would call it a safety issue. I think it, there is some traffic challenges on the site to fully, kind, like you said, we're working within a, a previously developed site that, that has its own challenges. Adding the, the two drive-through lanes was able to keep it, so we, we were able to have or keep our pavement and provide some parking in that area without modifying too much of the site or really completely changing it or having to, to impact the existing drive-through. I do think, you know, it is, it is a longer back-out period than, than we've seen in some other restaurants in the past, but it is something that we've had reviewed through, you know, our, our office and, and our engineers would not be stamping plans that, that we don't believe are, are meeting our client and the, and the safe, or the public's needs. And McDonald's operational teams also reviews all these, who look at all their restaurants across the country and they haven't raised any, any major concerns on the, the access that we're showing around the drive-through from the parking spaces you referenced.
Well, I, I appreciate that. I guess what, what this comes down to for me is you have, you have a, an operation there now. The operation is working, it may not be working perfectly, but again, you, we, you are the, the captive of, of what you got. My concern is that this attempt, uh, this good faith attempt to make a better operation may in fact be making it worse and maybe leading to, to more congestion and clogging, uh, the, a greater risk for people to be clipped by cars or cars to be clipped. And that's, that's what's going on for me and I'm not sure that, that in good faith, if in fact I thought that was likely to happen or be the case, that I could vote for this and I'm not making a declaration one way or the other, but just trying to let you know where I'm coming from and see if there's something that you can tell me that'll help sway me one way or the other.
No, I think, um, like I said, we've, we've, we've worked through the, the plan in front of you internally, externally with McDonald's and, and also with city staff over the past couple of months. So I think we're, we're taking the, the site that we have and how it's previously developed and, and like you said, making our, our best earnest effort to improve the existing operation. I believe it was referenced that a lot of people are sitting in that drive-through line, even if they're just going to get a cup of coffee and that's, that's really how, how traffic is swaying to McDonald's restaurants as they're seeing a greater and greater increase to the drive-through. So that's really a big focus for them is, is how to handle that drive-through traffic because that's how most people are using it. And they've gotten, they've gotten very good over the past, you know, so many years of, of implementing, you know, new and innovative drive-through technologies. This side-by-side program has been around for about ten to twelve years and they wouldn't be making, you know, such a substantial investment into their restaurant for something that they thought may lead to an inefficient operation or, or some major circulation concerns. So I think, you know, leaning on the expertise that we have from them and the guidance we've gotten from them is, is kind of how we, we approach putting together these layouts and, and we look to them for approval to ensure that, that we are making their operation better and better serving the needs of the community that use their restaurant.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. At this point I'd ask, is anybody in the audience wishing to speak in concern for the plan? None? Anybody wishing to speak in favor? None? Any other questions for staff or the applicant before we close the hearing?
Point of clarification, the design for the restaurant itself will be clapboard, correct?
Yeah.
And we discussed gray or tan, I mean, in terms of, to meet with the neighborhood. If you could just discuss that.
Yeah? Can you respond to that?
Yep.
Make sure you stay in there a minute when you step up.
Relative to the building, we're not changing the, the only material that will change on the building is the addition of the cultured stone and removal of the mansard roof and kind of bring up a straight parapet roof that you see on the, the other restaurant that was done. We are proposing a, a gray color scheme on the building currently, which is similar to the one on Daniel Webster Highway. I know there is a, a comment from staff relative to the color on the building. So we, we have a gray option, which is what we're currently proposing. We also have a tan option that I could show you if, if you thought that that would be more appropriate given the area we're in.
Does anybody wanna see this tan option? Okay. All right, thanks. Thanks. Okay, at this time I'd, I'm gonna close the hearing and move into the public meeting.
Yeah, I gotta say, with all due respect, this is to me a horrible plan. It's on many levels. There's no way I would support or vote for a plan that has stacked vehicles blocking parking spaces, handicapped or otherwise. Uh, you know, back in my former days on the, on the zoning board, stacks have become a major issue in the city. And you can name the places that it becomes an issue. East Haller Street sometimes, West Haller Street all the time at the Dunkin' Donuts. We, the last Dunkin' Donuts that came before us, when I was on the zoning board, was the one on Broad Street. And we put a requirement on that plan that the, the old Dairy Queen, we put a requirement on that plan that there be a fifteen-car stack capacity there or else it would have to come back to the zoning board before it came to the planning board. Because that's the one thing that causes true hazards, in my view, in the city. When cars back out into the main road, when cars back into other cars, that's what causes true safety issues. In this case, we have handicap vehicles. I'm not suggesting that handicap drivers are less capable than other drivers. However, some of those vans are big, the, the vans that actually carry people who need wheelchairs. The idea, and, and this is the other thing that I'm very cynical of because certainly the app, the engineering company and McDonald's, they have an interest in bringing their stores up to their new designs and they're all put, and the reason that the two-car drive-throughs are important has nothing to do with safety. It's, it, it assists them in the way that they can turn over the cars as they're going through. It, it assists them in the production of their product and presentation of it. The idea that two cars stacked, two cars stacked up is gonna block a parking space, to me is just ridiculous. It's not even considerable. And also the idea that we have a, we have this business here, whether or not it should have been put here in this design in the first place is not for me to say, right? That was done by a previous board years ago. But I'm looking at it like, just because they have a space that's way too small to accommodate what they wanna do, I'm not going to look at it like, well, they're making it better than it was. I'm not gonna look at it that way at all. I'm gonna say it hasn't, it's, it's been troublesome. I find that whole operation troublesome when I go through there. And I don't think, I'm personally, I don't think I'm a dumb person, but when, a lot of times when I get out there, I don't know where the hell I'm going because you have to go around and around. So I look at this like, no, I could probably see it if those spaces weren't against the building. If they were, they have a lot of property there, that building should be further up and further away. Though, they're not gonna move their whole building, but if they wanted to utilize their site in a more productive way, that's what would need to be done here. And a lot of this is new, you know? We haven't had drive-throughs, this has evolved. We had standards for drive-throughs and over the past twenty years, we've come to learn that some of those standards are just not, we, we kind of took the industry word for what was required and what their turnaround time was and how long a car would stay in the stack. And we took all that information, but realistically, over the last fifteen, twenty years, we've seen that that isn't accurate. It just doesn't work that way. So as, looking at it strictly from the city of Nashville's point of view, I cannot support something that has the, the stack. On the other hand, if they don't have the spaces against the building, I think that this design will improve what's presently there, no question, because the stack will move faster with two ordering points than with one. So if you were just to remove the parking space issue, even though I don't think it's a great plan, it would be better than the plan that they have, in my view. But with the spaces, I think they gotta come up with something that gets those spaces out of here regular and handicapped as well, or I can't support it.
Mr. Weber?
Question for staff. With the number of parking spaces, with the, these spaces eliminated, are they within correctness?
No, they would need a, a waiver for parking, I believe.
Right, I'm looking at here that what they're proposing is, that's small, forty-two spaces and they have to have at least forty-two. So with removing those spaces, then they would need a waiver.
Okay.
And that would be up to the board to grant that.
Okay. I've, I've gone to there many, many times and I have to totally agree with Jerry that these parking spaces cannot be there and safety that they're, a person can get out of. Double vans, one van in front of the other trying to back out, you're taking your, that second van that's, um, let's say, the north, northeast, the most northeast side, they back out with another van here, they're not gonna make it, they're gonna clip somebody. They're just, even though they have a beep. I think it's a, a really, a, a safety issue for that to be there. They, if they, the parking spaces in the back are never filled, never filled up, any, every, any time, every, you know, any time of the day. I've never seen these up here on the top northeast parking spaces, never been filled. It's occasionally, there's a car there, cars on this side and down are there. The parking spaces that are now... The parking spaces that are now there, just right around the parking, are there, filled up at lunchtime. But any time after that, these up on the top are never filled by the dumpster, never. I don't ever see a car or vehicle, unless it's a truck, big truck wants to park up there because he wants to get something, a diesel truck or something, a bigger truck that wants to be out of the way of everything. But yeah, I would say, no way. This is a danger right here. This is a hazard for them. And we had that same problem on another site that was a gas station that had it right up against a building, and there was just no place for them to park and pull out safely. And that's what this is. This isn't a pull-out safe.
Mr. Varley?
I mean, I appreciate the concern, I think particularly about the handicap spaces and not wanting to block those, because those are the only two handicap spaces in the plan. I'm not so sure... I'm less concerned, I guess, from a safety perspective, the sense that, you know, we have, you know, the stop here coming out of the drive-through and this is, you know, the circulation on the site is going to be, you know, slow-moving. So I do think people would have to take a little more care backing out of the spaces. So I'm a little less concerned about that, I guess. But I do think, you know, the only two handicap spaces being there, you know, to the extent that there's a risk of queuing, you know, up to those spaces. But I'm not sure where we would put those handicap spaces, if not next to the building. You know, I suppose they could go in the back here where there's a walkway. But there's not... I mean, there's not a great alternative that I see. I mean, and otherwise, you know, for the non-handicap spaces, I mean, the reality is, is people don't have to park there. So if the spots are not particularly well-positioned... As you said, Mr. Weber, I mean, there seems like there's plenty of parking in the back, the back of the site, and there's parking on the right side, too. I mean, I don't... I'm just... I guess what I'm wondering is, what would we be asking of the applicant? I mean, I understand that, you know, from Jerry's perspective, you may just say, well, there's nothing, you know, there's nothing that they could do sort of in this configuration that would satisfy me. But I guess I would wonder, what would we be asking the applicant to change?
Are you asking me?
I'm asking you, Ed, or...
So I don't know. I mean, they have a building and they have... They want to have two drive-through windows in an area that really won't accommodate it. And there are plenty of businesses that exist without drive-throughs. If you take away your drive-through and you have a building and a restaurant there and parking, the problem goes away. I'm just saying, if you want to have your drive-throughs, don't put them in front of where people park their cars. And, you know, while I was at first seeing this, I didn't even consider the point Mr. Robbins made, which is, not only do they have to back out into the cars, but they got to go way past the cars to get to the point where they can drive on the part that they're allowed to drive through, which actually makes it even worse, to me.
Yeah. That you think of... Oh, I'm sorry.
So my answer to the question is, make it safe. And that's not my job. Come up with a safe design. If you can't have a safe design, then your site can't accommodate what you want to do. That's... And I'm not... It's not for me to solve their drive-through problem, the way I see it.
Well, I guess my point is more a practical one, which is, we can do one of three things as a board. We can approve the plan, we could deny it, or we could approve it with conditions.
Right.
So I guess what I'm suggesting is, are you proposing that there are some condition that you would suggest that would satisfy?
Yeah, they have no parking against the building, which they don't have now, right? That's something that's new. The present building doesn't have that. So I'm saying, you don't have it for a reason, because it's a terrible idea. Come up... If you want to modify your site, modify it, but don't do it at that expense. That's kind of my answer to you, to that.
Mr. Weber?
Well, to your point, you know, if they eliminated that parking just based on their proposed plan, I think it would be equally as dangerous to have the handicap spots across the way. It looks like a great distance, at least to me. I'm not sure what the exact measurement is, to have a handicap person have to cross those three lanes of traffic, basically, to get access to the building.
Or go to the front against Northeastern Boulevard, where you would only have to cross where the traffic drives around the building after it leaves the drive-through.
Around the corner.
Yeah, if you look at the front along Northeastern Boulevard, if the handicap spaces were there, people would have to just cross where cars drive through, right? They wouldn't have to cross all that. That's just an option. I don't know where the handicap places are now. I didn't notice. They must be...
They're crossed away.
They're crossed, but it's not as great a distance.
Yeah, I got you.
Mr. Peterson?
As it stands now at that site, the handicap parking is on the right side of the drawing in those spaces, and it's not ideal, because people have to cross through traffic and... But it works. As it stands right now, there are no parking spaces up close to the building, on the right side of the building. And I think putting in... The reason why they're not there is for... Somebody in the past probably had the same discussion. That's not a good place for a parking space to be, because they would have to back out into oncoming traffic. And here, it would be two lanes of the stacked-up traffic that some driver would have to get the cooperation of two lanes of incoming traffic and try to negotiate their way out of that space. It's just asking for future problems. So worst case, you put the handicap parking on the right, where it currently is, and maybe put a pronounced crosswalk there so people can get through. Or, like someone suggested, put it in the front of the building, at the bottom of the drawing, and park there, and they could, you know, walk over to the building, and there'd be less throughput or fast throughput at that location, at the bottom of the drawing.
I think we just should distinguish, though, between the stacking issue and the traffic flow issue, because there's lots of spots on the site where people would be backing into the traffic flow, either, you know, from the drive-through or just from the general circulation. And that includes, you know, in the, I guess, the southern, southwestern part of the, you know, sort of the front of the site, where if you had handicap parking there, I mean, people are still backing into the, you know, both the regular through lane and then also the drive-through traffic. So I mean, I don't think you can avoid that.
The only difference, though, not to argue, but those locations are not stacked vehicles. Stacked vehicles are stagnant. They're standing still.
Right.
And they can't move until the car in front of them moves. Around this way, this is just the flow of traffic.
Right, yeah.
And they may have to stop to merge here, but that's the only thing that's going to stop them. It's not going through the drive-through that...
Right, no, no, I understand. That's what I'm saying. I think we distinguish between the stacking issue, which is, I'm in a spot and I can't get out right now because the queue is beyond the parking spots, versus I have to pull out into traffic, you know, into the traffic flow of the site. Because like I said, I think that the pulling out and having traffic, you know, behind you and having to deal with that is just going to be an issue on the site, regardless of where you put, you know, the handicap spots, for certain. But whereas the stacking issue is, you know, these are the only two handicap spots on the site, you know, if there's a queue there, I can't get in and out, you know, that's an issue.
Right.
Mr. Robbins?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Anybody been to the Starbucks at Exit Six?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You know that you kind of pull in and you take a right to go through the drive-through, and there is an escape lane all the way through. You can always escape the drive-through. And as you take a right against the side of the building, there are half a dozen parking spaces. And I have parked in those spaces a number of times. When the drive-through is busy, it is very difficult to back out of those spaces. And that's with the escape lane. So it's not a question of... There's a way to go. I don't have to back into traffic and wait for a car to move. That's one concern I have. I think this setup here with the seven spaces, two of which are handicapped, is very dangerous, is going to lead to people getting stuck in there. A lot of backing and filling, and I would defer to our traffic expert here, but my understanding is that probably close to one-half of all accidents involve backing, backing up. You know, they're fender benders, but they're fender benders, you hit people, that sort of thing. Second thing is, there are no escape lanes at the ordering points. You are stuck in almost every other location in the city that I can think of, and I don't know the McDonald's that we've referenced, that was referenced here earlier. There are escape lanes. You can get through, you can get by. If you don't have escape lanes, you're stuck. If something happens, you're stuck. You can't move. You can't go forward, you can't go backward. So what do you do? You get out of your car if you have to. Then you're definitely stuck, as are the people behind you. Escape lanes are very important. No escape lanes on this, a very potentially dangerous spot. Another thing is, and I do empathize with the owners and the people who are making this plan, they have to deal with what they have. They have to deal with the space. They have to deal with what they can do with the space, and my God, they've got to make, you know, go round and round and round. It's hard, and I do empathize with that. Having said that, that doesn't mean that the city of Nashua, through our board or any other board, has to somehow make a concession that, quote-unquote, fixes that for them if it's not an appropriate decision. I don't think this is an appropriate decision. I think that leaving this alone, and I do plan to vote no on this, is the best way to go. They actually have an operation that works. It may not work the way they want it to, but it works. There are escape lanes. If you look at the existing parking, there is much more room. And I'm looking at C3, which says demolition plan. If you look at the parking spaces, there are parking spaces over on the right-hand side, and they have that long island, so those are protected. There are parking spaces up on the north. There's that island there. There are... There's not the issue of backing into a stacked system. They're just, you know, backing out of a parking space the way you would in any parking area. There's, relatively speaking, a whole lot more room on the drive-through going around. There are ways to escape the drive-through all the way around. No, I think that what is proposed is not good for the city. It's not good for traffic flow. It is just not good. And so I second a lot of what has been said recently, and I shall pass.
Anybody else? Steve?
I've got the escape lane. I'm wondering what are the reasons people want to escape? Change of mind? If you change your mind, you don't want to order anymore?
I'm sorry, what?
Why would someone want to escape the ordering lane?
Um, I... If you're asking me, I can think of a couple of things. One of them is car ahead, engine fire, car breaks down, somebody has a medical emergency. There is... And I really hate to bring this up. We live in a time when all sorts of things happen, and we have witnessed any number of incidents in the last few months where people have had to leave a location very quickly in disarray. They've had to get away from something. We don't know what's going to happen. I'm not, as I said, I want to be very careful about referencing that. But if something breaks down, if something stops, if somebody starts arguing with a person who's taking their order, people get frustrated in these lines, they want to go around, any number of reasons. And most places, if you think about it, have escape lanes all the way around. They really do, for just that reason.
Right. And I think you're correct that today, most places do. Drive-throughs started becoming common around here, you know, 20 plus or minus years ago, and the first ones did not have escape lanes. And I can still point out some that they still exist that way. Do we hear incidents regarding those, like you mentioned? I think those examples that you gave for why there should be escape lanes are pretty much related to emergencies, right? These plans go through a review by the fire department, and you would think they would have commented on that. The other thing that you brought up, you asked about people who've been to the Exit Six Starbucks. Yeah, I've been there 100 times. How many times I've parked in that little section there? One, once. And I learned my lesson. So like Mr. Varley pointed out, there are options. I shed a concern. One of the earliest drive-throughs we did here in Nashua was on West Haller Street. And the biggest concern then was the backup into the street, a busy street like West Haller Street. Obviously, you don't want that happening. So we brought it to their attention. But there was also that issue, that queue backing into the street and all the parking spaces. No one would choose to park there. So it really wasn't serving that establishment well. They were making... They were doing good business, and so they chose to alter the site, and it works pretty well now. I go over there often, and it works very well. You know, we've been looking at these kinds of sites all the time, and I think there's the same kind of discussion we go through every time. Sometimes we lean one way, like I said earlier. Sometimes we want the parking up against the building, other times, no, we don't want the parking against the building. So pick whatever you want, whatever night you want. Something like this, I think, we have a lot of experience in the city with drive-throughs, and we're adding more and more. The applicants, engineer, baller engineering, they've been doing this over and over, and someone correctly pointed out, obviously, they're going to maximize this, the site, to do whatever they want to do. I live not too far away from here, actually. I know the site very well, and my kids grew up here, too. But I don't... You know, I don't see how bad the problems that we are hearing tonight from the board, how bad they really are. I mean, you can pick any site and find a number of reasons why they wouldn't work. Just can't, you know? And even the ones that you think are perfect with the escape lanes, you go there and you will find reasons. And, you know, we have to rely on people with experience preparing these plans. I could just name a few right now that came before us recently. Dunkin' Donuts and Daniel Webster Highway, Cumberland Farms, both of them on Daniel Webster Highway. Wendy's on Amherst Street, it was just two years ago. Name them one after the other, and we have gone through the same kind of discussion. And so I don't know if we can pick on this one and say, this is not going to work, this is a terrible plan, because I really don't see how this is any different from many of those that we have approved.
Good?
The first lane, the most northeast lane, if you scale what a car would be, it would probably have to back out, and two cars would have to get out of the way before it could really make the right-hand turn to go out into the, beyond the island, through that painted area that would be there, just to... through that painted area that would be there, just to get out. It would have to cross over both just to back out. But if they, they would have to go through both drive-up lanes. And this would be probably anywhere from ten to one o'clock is the time that this is really going to be heavy, where it's almost out to the street in cars. And that's going there at that time, that's, it is backed up all the way to the street. It does go out fast. They will be able to queue people faster, and you'll probably have maybe a third last backup. So that design for those first two is kind of really bad. The third and fourth, coming back to the handicap, would be less impacted because of the double queuing. But the first parking space, I can foresee real problems. And so like a lot of them said, just don't park there. And that's what they're going to find. Nobody's going to want to park there. The person that's going to park there is going to be in big trouble, so. And we've had that problem with others. We had the ice cream shop that came before us. They said, we're not going to have parking up against a walk because we can foresee that's a problem. So they parked outside. They put their cars on the outside, so.
I mean, it sounds to me, not that I want to kind of cut you guys off, but we are kind of circling back on the same discussion here.
Yeah.
Quite a bit. So I'm sensitive to everybody's concern. Is there anything else that you think you want to talk about other than these four or five parking spaces that are in the way of the queuing? Because that's about what we've hit most of the time. And I don't disagree with anybody, you know? I just don't want to take the applicant and everybody else's time to talk about the same thing for an hour and a half kind of thing, so. And if people have concerns with the plan, I think we have the option. We should, you know, someone should make a motion. But Maggie, go ahead, yeah?
Well, I did just want to reiterate that someone had brought this up already, that I would probably feel more comfortable if the handicap parking was brought down to that one spot.
Yeah.
I agree.
What do you mean, down that one spot?
Well, there's a, there's a empty spot, well, a regular spot right here. They slid it down if we were to approve this plan otherwise.
Yeah, I mean, someone could make a motion that way to stipulate that if they wanted. But I think, I didn't obtain any other things. Go ahead.
I just want to make a comment about what Mr. Crane said, because I really disagree with it, that we have to take the word of the engineers who professionals in doing this. No, we don't. These companies and these engineers have an interest. They have, they have an interest in presenting what is desirable for their client and not what's desirable for Nashua. So somebody says, this is a good idea. I don't look at it like they're the professional. I mean, I do sometimes, but when common sense comes into play, I completely dismiss that and say, sorry, I've lived here for as many years as I have, I've gone through a million drive-through, this isn't going to work. I don't care how many engineers say it's going to work. I know it's not. So I feel perfectly comfortable saying I don't have to take the input of the applicant's engineer in deciding whether or not it's a safe layout. And I'm, the only thing I'm asking for is tell me another place anywhere in Nashua that has parked vehicles backing into two stacked lanes and a flow of traffic. If such a place exists, and we know that it works, I'll go along with this. I can't, I can't think of one. I've been sitting here trying to think of all the drive-throughs that exist. And they're not all the same. Bank drive-throughs, pharmacy drive-throughs have noirs near the volume of McDonald's and Dunkin' Donuts. So you can't, you don't have one rule. You have to have the busy drive-throughs and the non-busy drive-throughs. I can't think of a busy drive-through that has anything close to this. And if there is, Steve, I'd be interested to hear it seriously. And I would consider changing my mind. I just don't think there is.
I started discussing that issue earlier. I was the person to bring up that issue. And I said, those spaces as close as a drive-through wouldn't work. And they can name them as employee parking. Remember I said that? I was concerned about handicap parking. We can ask for alternatives for the handicap parking and still have the parking spaces here. Like Mr. Robbins said, Starbucks is like this. It's not two drive-throughs, but one. And people choose not to park there, like I do. So the site can still work if we can find better locations for the handicap parking, like on the front side, like you suggested, not on some boulevard side.
Okay.
And that's it.
So I think we have a couple of options here. So we can, someone can make a motion to approve this plan. Someone can make a motion to disapprove it. I remind you, if you're going to make a motion to disapprove it, you need to specifically reference the criteria in 190-148. You have a blue card in your box there. You need to be specific about what criteria.
Mr. Jau.
And you also, we also have the option of tabling this off, pushing it, giving some direction to the applicant to make some corrections, having heard our testimony, and coming back. I think, what's their timeframe for that?
The next meeting is May 17th.
May 17th. So those are really the three options that you have on the table. So I'm willing to take a motion or recommendation from somebody if they want to do that.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we table this application to a date certain, with the intention of allowing the applicant a chance to consider our concerns that parking spaces backing into stacked drive-throughs is unacceptable and won't be approved by the board. So come up with a plan that doesn't require that. That's really the only objection I have to this. So my motion would say, take some time, take a look at it, come back with a plan that doesn't have that problem, and we would certainly entertain it.
And you said to a date certain, what, I know our next meeting is May 17th. I don't know if we want to give them a little more time.
I'd be happy to give them as much time as they want. I don't know what the rules are. Do we have to have?
Well, our next meeting is May 17th, and the meeting after that will be June 7th. But we can table it to May 17th. And then if the applicant needs more time, they can ask to have it continue to a following meeting, if that's acceptable.
Sure.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table from Mr. Pucci to table this with the, you know, sort of the recommendations to the applicant regarding the parking spaces and the double stacking issue.
The applicant, the engineer would like to say something if he can. I don't know if he can.
I have to reopen the hearing.
We have to reopen the hearing.
I'm fine with that.
I make a motion that we reopen the hearing.
You want to withdraw your?
I will withdraw my original motion. Make a motion to open up, give the applicant a chance to speak to what he wants to speak to.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to reopen the hearing. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you can step forward, applicant. So maybe you can specifically address to whether the tabling and addressing is going to be reasonable for you?
I just wanted to touch base on a few of the comments relative to the parking at your, at the side of the building, which I understand is a big point of contention. If we were to eliminate some of the parking there, especially the ones closest to the drive-through entrance, would that be amenable? Our, keeping the ADA spaces is something we really prefer to do on these, to keep those as close to the building as possible. I believe it was referenced, keeping them on the east side of the building would have a significant walk. And the front also has some challenges, so keeping those at the building is preferred. But if we were to remove some of the parking north of those at the drive-through entrance to give a little bit more buffer room there and more room for those spaces to back out into just what would be considered traffic and not necessarily stacking, would that be more acceptable to the board, or?
I'm not going to alter what my motion was. My motion was to come up with a plan that does not involve cars backing into the stacked, the stack going into the drive-throughs. Any cars, whether they're regular parking or handicapped cars.
I think the short answer is it depends on the different, we have different perspectives individually. I guess the question I would have for you is, do you have any objection to us tabling this and you taking the time until May 17th to sort of come up with what you think is the best option from your perspective, and then presenting that, and then we would need to discuss it again? Because again, I, you know, from Mr. Pucci's perspective?
It's my motion, but everybody doesn't automatically agree with it.
Yeah, right. He might have one view of what would be, you know, what would make the plan acceptable from his perspective versus me, versus Maggie, versus Ed, you know, so.
No, we're, that's definitely preferable than to a denial on the project. We'd definitely be open to working with staff. I just wanted to offer that as something that I hear is swirling around. And then just quickly relative to the cars backing out into a stacked lane, while we do have two drive-through entrance lanes, we do have that condition at the McDonald's on Daniel Webster Highway. Has a similar drive-through layout to this one. It's just a single drive-through entrance lane, but it does feature parking spaces up against the building. So that would be a site that does kind of have what you were referring to there.
Okay, I'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Just if they do, can he show how, when he comes back, that he shows how a car could? We had that similar situation at the gas station. We asked for.
Turning movements?
Turning movements with a car, relative car, showing a car how they would, how they would have to, how they would back out and get into the, turn the lane that goes around.
Okay. All right, any other questions? No? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing then. Re-enter the meeting? So, do you want to reintroduce your motion?
Yep, I make a motion that we table this till the May 17th meeting, with the intention of giving the applicant a chance to modify their plans so that they don't have cars backing into the drive-through stack.
Okay, so we have that motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weber. Any other further discussion?
We just one, one last point. As an individual, I just want to be clear that I am still very concerned about the escape lanes. I don't want to get that on the record. Thank you very much.
And like I was going to ask, is that one issue that's going to be considered? Now we have two issues, so should that be?
I'm happy to modify my motion that they consider Mr. Robbins' point about the bypass lane in their considerations for coming back to the board.
Okay, does the second still stand on that?
Second still stands.
Okay. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so motion's tabled till the 17th at this point. And you can give more time, then just work with the staff on that. All right, so that, we're going to move on to new business, site plan number five, John J. Flatley Company. That, that application is currently postponed still at this time. There's no applicant here for that. Other business, case number one, review of tentative agenda determined proposals of regional impact. Does anybody have a chance to look at the tentative agenda? Mr. Varley?
Having reviewed the tentative agenda, I'll make a motion that there are no proposals of regional impact.
Second on that motion. Mr. Pucci, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. All right, other business, case number two, referral from Board of Alderman on proposal R-18-29. Got some folks here to talk on that.
We have Madeline Minot, who's the waterways manager. Would she like to speak to this?
Great, thanks. Come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Madeline Minot. I'm the Waterways Manager for the City of Nashua. I work in the Community Development Division, and I work on conservation projects and assist the Conservation Commission on special projects such as this. The City of Nashua, its Conservation Commission, as well as the Society for the Protection of New Hampshire Forests, have been working as partners to conserve Sullivan Farm, which is the last remaining farm here in Nashua. The city's natural resource inventory and conservation plan cites existing agricultural uses as a limited resource and notes that undeveloped agricultural soils in Nashua are scarce. So we believe that the Sullivan Farm property has exceptional conservation value. The Conservation Commission has ranked this a very high conservation priority for them for quite a while. There's, as far as natural resources, there's very valuable water resources. There's approximately two acres of wetlands, 500 feet of frontage on both sides of Lincoln Brook, as well as the three-acre Coburn Pond, which the city has designated as a critical wetland. There's also very valuable agricultural soils, as I mentioned, forest, wildlife habitat, as well as scenic recreation values. And this property also abuts other conservation areas in Hollis. And so we would be expanding existing conservation areas. The appraised value of the conservation easement is $1.3 million. We've planned $1,370,000 for this project to cover other direct project costs, such as the survey, closing costs, as well as starting an initial easement stewardship endowment. The funding for this project comes from a series of grants, as well as funds from the Conservation Commission. So our partner, the Society for Protection of New Hampshire Forests, has obtained grants from the USDA, the 1772 Foundation, and the New Hampshire Moose Plate Grant Program. There was an L-Chip grant awarded to the city in the amount of $213,000 for this project. And then the Conservation Commission has unanimously voted to approve spending up to $384,000 from the Conservation Fund towards this project. The conservation easement would prevent the subdivision of any parts of the property to be sold separately from the others. It would also prevent any future development beyond the limited designated restricted development areas. Any additional development in those areas would be restricted to structures that support a farming use directly. And the conservation easement would specifically allow agricultural use, but prevent any other commercial uses on the property. So the Society for Protection of New Hampshire Forests and the city have been working very closely with the landowners to ensure that this conservation easement would match their vision and their desire for the future of their property. I'm happy to take any questions.
I agree. Ms. Harper?
I just had one question on page five, section B, number two, regarding the sale of excess power generated in the operation of renewable energy. Does this exclude a solar or wind farm?
So they currently have two ground-mounted solar panels that they use to offset energy use at the farm. They, they do have plans to potentially add some additional ones, and it's mainly specifically to power operations at the farm. They're not looking to build a solar farm.
I did see it was addressed further along.
Yep, yep.
I just was curious if they could, if they had that.
Yeah, so the, I'll say that the USDA grant, which funds half of the cost of the easement, has specific restrictions on impervious cover as well as other uses. So it, all of these grants have their own restrictions, and that would, you know, it really makes it so that the only potential use is farming. They can have solar panels or other renewable energy generation to support the farming use, but not in a commercial endeavor.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Questions?
Question?
Yes, Steve?
Maybe just answered it, but you mentioned agricultural soils. And so the reason for conserving land for agricultural soils is for possible farming? Or there are environmental reasons?
So there are many reasons, I think, to conserve this property. But one of them is those agricultural soils, which are ranked of very high value statewide. And so being able to conserve those soils for farming is, is one of the primary motivations for this easement.
Ed? Would there be any commercial farming?
There's, currently is, commercial farming on the site, so.
I mean, clearing for, just clearing the land just for farming? Or do they have to keep a certain trees and stuff like that?
We can't dictate in the easement exactly. You know, we can't say it has to remain an apple orchard. Typically, conservation easements are not that specific. And we think that that would be potentially harmful to maintaining a viable farming business. It's hard for us to say what the market for apples is going to be in 20 years. Maybe a more viable farming practice would be, you know, squash or another kind of tree, or?
But I'm saying, is there, it's currently just? But I'm saying, is there, it's currently just an apple orchard right now?
Um, there's several things. There's some greenhouses, apple orchards, berries, perennials, pumpkin patch. So, there's, there's also some goats and alpacas and a few animals, chickens. So, there's multiple farming uses on the property. Yes, the majority of the area is an apple orchard.
Good. Any other questions? All right, thanks. So, what we're looking for here really is a recommendation, right, for, you know, a positive recommendation or, or negative.
Are these both together?
No.
No, this is for 18-029 right now. So, would anybody like to make a motion on that? Mr. Barley?
Uh, just, yeah, I mean, I think this is, this is a great idea. I mean, said the last farm in Nashua, so I think the idea of conserving this and not letting it be developed for other reasons is, is a very positive step. So, with that in mind, I would make a motion for a positive recommendation on R-18029.
Motion for that?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Pucci. Any discussion?
I'll just, I'll just quickly comment that I don't like to vote for things that I don't completely understand, and I don't completely understand this, but I have absolute confidence that a lot of people put a lot of hard work into this, so I have no problem recommending it.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, positive recommendation passes. Thanks. Next item we have on the agenda, if I can find it again, is business, or other business, case number three, referral from Board of Alderman on proposed, uh, R-18013, amending the accessory dwelling ordinance. So, I don't know if we have anybody here to talk to that, but Linda, we can...
Yeah, this ordinance, what, this ordinance is going to do is, it's proposing to remove the language that the owner has to occupy either the primary or the accessory dwelling unit as their principal place of residence for five years, following the issuance of a CO. So, we're just taking out that portion of it, and I think that was part of the discussion that the planning board had last time.
Pretty sure we asked for that.
That it had come through.
Yep, yeah.
So, they're just going to remove that part of it.
Yeah. Okay, so, understanding that, does anybody have any further questions for staff or, or any discussion?
It's the same as it was before, except for that.
Except for moving this language.
Okay.
So, we can't change our minds, though?
Good.
Yeah, we'd like you to add that, like, so.
All right, anybody like to make a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion that we, that we recommend approving the proposed change in the, in 018013, the accessory dwelling ordinance that strikes the language for a period of at least five years, following the granting of the certificate of occupancy, the accessory dwelling unit in line five of 190-32.
All right, so we have that motion on the table. Anyone second it? Anyone?
I'll second that motion.
Jeremy's like, wait a minute.
No further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No?
Steve, this is an option.
That motion passed as well.
I should just go for it.
Yeah?
Okay.
That's why I didn't, because I wanted to go for it.
That's the last thing on our agenda here. Does anybody have any other discussion items they want to bring up?
I do.
Ed?
Really?
Yes, sorry.
No, it's fine, I'm just kidding.
The 17th, I'm not going to be here because the National Regional Planning Commission has got a roundtable discussion, and they keep doing this to me, having these great round-chair discussions on planning board stuff, and I wanted to go there to talk about stuff that we have here, that we get problems with, and I wish that they would change their dates. I'll have to talk to Karen Baker and other directors, see if we can do something about it. This last Saturday, there was a, um, thing up in Concord, it was, Linda was there volunteering. They had some really great discussion stuff, big-time stuff about the law and how's it, how it changed. They have some great speakers, and I would encourage people in, on our board to plan on it. Put that date down next year, because it, you know, it just helps you out to make better decisions in here and understand what we can do and what we can't do better. It just has, it's just 50 people in the class sometimes, that, and they have good preliminary discussions on economics and all kinds of different subjects, and great food, but more than that, they had, and many, many, I would have brought the, what they had, and so you could get an idea of all the different workshops that are, were available. And it's just one of those things that, I know we have our discussion time, our workshop that the lawyer comes in and starts talking to us about things, and we can ask questions, but there's a vast more knowledge out there for us that's made for the state of New Hampshire, and they do this once a year. And it doesn't, it costs the city money, they're paying $55 for me to go there, and, but every minute of it is very valuable for any of you guys to go up there and actually learn better, and, and you can find out stuff that you wouldn't know here, you wouldn't get it, you're just not going to get it. You're not going to get it from a lawyer. There's just many topics that are, are helpful to us. That's what it's for.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? The only thing I'd remind everybody is, Thursday, the 10th, we have our workshop here, seven o'clock
Seven o'clock, room 208.
downstairs. I think everybody got the list of, of the topics that we're going over, so that was in your, in your packet as well.
Who's that going to be? Is this a discussion amongst?
Attorney Bolton will be there as well.
Yeah, so we'll ask, we can ask some questions amongst ourselves and also with the city folks, so. All right, anybody you want to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 9:17.